Okay, good evening. Welcome to September 8th Board of Selectmen meeting here at Whipple Hall. Is that too loud? I feel like I'm getting echo, but anyways. Reminder that this meeting is being recorded and we would ask that when people want to speak, if they could come up to the podium here and use the mic, give us your name so that it gets recorded on the Zoom meeting as well. Okay, open it up for any public comments. Okay, hearing no public comments. Bring up, we want to finalize the fireworks ordinance. Kim, do you want to lead us off on that?
Yes. So back in May, the selectmen after public hearing voted to adopt a fireworks ordinance, banning fireworks with the exception of some holidays. You have a draft of an ordinance in front of you now. It's also posted on the town website. Since we posted on the town website, we got some comments from citizens who would prefer the July 4th holiday to include more than just July 4th. Some of the comments expressed a desire to coincide with the Pleasant Lake Protective Association fireworks event, which does not happen on July 4th. So there, the suggestions are having it the weekend prior to July 4th. So say if July 4th was on a Tuesday, it would be the weekend before. If July 4th was on a Thursday or Friday, it would be that weekend. Then the question would be, what do you do with Wednesday if you do decide to add additional days? So tonight, you need to decide if this ordinance will be adopted. If you want to change it with regard to the July 4th holiday, you should do that tonight. And I believe the chief also wants to suggest some additions for payment of the fines, should she have to write any or her department writes any.
Okay, so why don't we then first discuss that section that talks about the following days before we get into the fines? Any comments, Bill or Janet, with regards to, really, the only one that has been, a suggestion has been made for a change is the July 4th date.
Yeah, I guess I would agree with Mr. Hornig that we include the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday closest to July 4th. I don't know what we do about Wednesday, but if it does seem to fall on a Wednesday, then we can always modify it, but I agree that that's what we should do.
Bill, do you have any?
I'm okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I thought that was a good suggestion as well. So we should modify that section for July 4th. And then Chief, you wanted to speak with regards to the enforcement piece?
There we are, green light, ooh, sorry.
I know, it does it.
A little close.
Reverb's back.
So I just wanted to address that, this is Emily Cobb, Chief of Police. The warnings that could be issued to folks, we would likely issue them on existing warning slips that we already have so that we'll be able to keep track and keep record of who has received warnings and who hasn't because the ordinance is specific about first offense and then second offenses. For the offenses that might require a fine, we would probably have some city ordinance or town ordinance summonses drawn up. Usually we'll use like the prison system who can draw up some forms and have them in carbon copy for us, or we could use another, another company to draw those up for us. But my, my suggestion, so that, that would be an expense for the police department, although I wouldn't probably get very many of them, hoping that we don't have to have a whole lot of fines. But my recommendation would be in terms of all fines shall be paid to the Town of New London, to just put a timeframe on that. Otherwise, folks might choose to not pay it ever. So one suggestion that the board may wish to consider is within 14 days of the action because that's in line with the appeals process that a person could take if they wish to grieve the fine.
So that's within 14 days from the date of the warning?
Issuance, yes.
Or the issuance?
Yes.
Okay.
Because whether they choose to pay the fine or appeal to the board, they would have 14 days to do so essentially.
Okay. Bill or Janet comment?
Fine.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Oh, I guess, I don't have any, any issues with the 4th of July issue. It's, it's whatever the board.
Right, I think we have to nail down the Wednesday.
That Wednesday.
I don't think we should do that on the fly, choose whether it's going to be before or after. I, I think if it happens, the first time it happens on a Wednesday and the police try to enforce it, if somebody does it the weekend before or the weekend after, maybe just make it both weekends before and after, I don't know. But we, we need to deal with Wednesday now, it has to be in the ordinance.
I think Will has a comment to make.
Will Ketter, we don't know for the PLPA whether it's going to be the weekend before or the weekend after until, like, I don't know now for the summer. So if the intent is to have it be the same night as PLPA fireworks, can we say that? And not have to worry about a weekend, maybe? I don't know.
Joe?
Joe Cardillo. What's the language for, that you're using for Labor Day? Aren't you using some language that discusses the celebration?
It says Labor Day weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
So you're actually spelling out the days. Yeah, I, I thought the first time around, you were just talking about in celebration of New Year's Day and celebration of, to give you the latitude without any specific, specific dates. So if, and I don't know.
Well, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day don't have dates. July 4th is really the only date. That's why we're having this problem, I mean.
But New Year's Eve and New Year's Day are always December 31st and January.
Right, they're always that date.
Right.
So, you know, and I don't know how you get the weekends on each side if it was, it's probably too much latitude to talk about in celebration of Independence Day instead of talking about the 4th of July, which gives you latitude. It gives the police latitude to say, well, it's the weekend before, you know, and every year it could be different. It's the weekend before, it's the weekend after, we're not going to enforce it. I mean, if it's that, if it's, or is that too, too much latitude?
Yeah, I, I think that if the police are going to have to enforce something, they need to be able to point to it and say, you know, you might celebrate the 4th of July, beginning of July, your vacation may be the middle of July.
Right.
You really, the, the police need certainty here. They should be able to point to this and say to the offender, you can't do it on this day.
I'll leave you to lock it down then. I just thought if it was more general, it'd have latitude, but clearly that's too much latitude.
Yes?
I'm Bob Lyon in New London. So I was just, the way that I read it, I thought there was also room for a special, for permitting outside of the usual days. Am I correct on that?
Just, that's just for professional shows where there's a fire department is there, there's a permit issued. So that's for big shows like Pleasant Lake Protective Association. The town also does a winter carnival celebration.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's what I thought we were discussing is how would the PLPA fit in, but if they want to do it on a Tuesday, they can get a permit.
Yeah, they can do it whenever they want. They could even do it in June, they could do one in August, they can do it anytime they want.
Got it, okay, so they're covered.
Right.
And anybody else that wanted to have a formal fireworks display under those rules with the fire department, with, with all of that.
Currently, there's only two, and they would have to be a public display.
Got it.
So that wouldn't be a wedding, say, at the Historical Society. That would, that wouldn't be a public display. Only public displays like Pleasant Lake Protective Association and the town.
Isn't the 4th of July typically, someone says 4th of July will be celebrated on this weekend? I mean, it's always over a weekend, right? It's on a Monday or a Friday. We don't do anything like on Thursdays, do we?
We do. Town employees and, and most businesses, the 4th of July is the day that's off.
Right. It's the actual day?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, it's not like Memorial Day where they did put it on a Monday, so we all get three-day weekends, which I know I appreciate, but we don't do that for 4th of July yet. And I guess you want to keep out of the Pleasant Lake Protective Association. Let's say if they don't, if they stop doing it.
Ever.
You know, this should be for, the whole, this is obviously going to be for the whole town. So if the Pleasant Lake Protective Association, if they generally do it, you know, the, the weekend before, the weekend after, I mean, I suppose you could just do that whole week.
So, well, I was going to say, so how much does it muck it up if we say it, in essence, will be a week, three days before the 4th and three days after? There's your seven.
Those, those five days, you'd have the five days, Monday to Friday.
Seven, seven days, actually.
Well, so you'd have five days and then two on either end?
Right.
So that's, right? Nine days.
Nine days.
Nine days to celebrate 4th of July.
Yeah.
Why?
Nancy? Will, the, some of the correspondence back and forth here suggested that maybe we're dealing with the wrong, wrong issue because the, what you do with Pleasant Lake and with the Sparklers is exempt from these, this ordinance anyway. So, so why are we worried about letting people do, do for several days what they're not allowed to do the rest of the year? If, if on the, whatever day they want, they can put the Sparklers out and you can have your show.
Well, Sparklers aren't allowed under the ordinance. So what I'm trying to avoid is Chief Cobb, you know, for 50 years, we've had this public viewing on Slope and Shore that they're nice enough to give, and the police have been there and nice enough to donate their time for that. So what I don't want is them, and people, you know, have their parties around Pleasant Lake and they have their kids with Sparklers and they set off their personal displays that same night because, and I can't speak for PLPA, but if I could, I, they would say that, you know, the better thing for the environment is to do it all in one night and not to spread it out. So if we have to have two different nights, that gets a little ugly because it goes against what we've been trying to say the whole time.
But the Sparklers, they can do anyway. I think Kim's.
No, those, the flares. They can do the flares.
Flares.
Flares, the circle of friendship could happen.
Yeah, yeah.
But the child holding a flare on our beach that, you know, they've grown up doing or whatever.
I guess I'm with you. I don't think having nine days is, deals with what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, so I think, you know, if you can figure out a way to encompass from the, if the Friday, if the 4th is in the middle of the week, from the Friday of the weekend before to Sunday of the weekend after would be ideal and cover everything that we would need for our display. I just don't want Chief Cobb to have to be policing this and turn it into an adversarial relationship where it's always been a, sort of a, a good thing.
Well, your suggestion then gives the nine days.
Yeah.
No, I think the nine days, though, runs counter to the, the goal of reducing the amount of pollution and so on. I mean.
You gotta, you gotta give and take.
Well, I mean, then, then why don't we make all of them, why don't we make all, all of these things nine-day holidays?
You could, I suppose, if you wanted to do that, but I don't know, you know, I'm just trying to find a way where the most people win. I think there's a lot of people in Pleasant Lake that feel like they're losing.
I'm not in favor of nine days just for the 4th of July. I think that, that's just going to cause us, the first time we get to one of the other holidays is going to get.
I suppose you could include something that says if, if there's a permit for a public display, anybody in town can also shoot off their own fireworks? I don't know.
Yeah, then you'll be doing it during the winter carnival.
Right, so then you would add two additional days. Well, it's less than nine days.
I'm sorry, Peter.
Peter Nichols, 86 Porcupine Ridge. I don't have a dog in the hunt, but in search of a resolution, there are determinations of specificity that are made in various ordinances each year. For example, the town announces perhaps that there's no parking on Main Street because of a snow emergency, or these kinds of notices and determinations that can be made when it, at the time. So perhaps in search of the solution every year, the town would put a public notice saying the 4th of July celebrations of fireworks will occur between these dates and that's public notice is given and the police has something to stand on and everybody knows what they need to do. Just a thought.
Good idea. What do you think, Chief? Would that work?
I, I think that would work for us as long as we just know what it is ahead of time so that we can enforce accordingly if we had to.
Joe?
I think that can apply to all the holidays then, that it's a public notice, so you're not worried about, you know, four and a half. Maybe if it makes it, the ordinance simpler.
I think those other three days are set. I mean, we know for sure when they're going to be. The only, the only oddball one was July.
The only one that's very equal is the July 4th one. Yes, Colin?
2029.
I'm sorry, what?
2029, because the first time is on a Wednesday.
It went through the calendar.
Right, that, that's, yeah, but that, we have the issue every year with Pleasant Lake because they're not, we're not sure if they're going to do the show before or after.
Okay, well, are you going to say something else?
It's July 4th as announced by the town and, I mean.
So we'll get, well, I think you're saying we'll allow July 4th for sure.
Mm-hmm.
And then there'll be additional days to celebrate longer. So, and people can always shoot them off July 4th. We'll never say that they can't do that day, right?
Right.
Regardless of the other days that may be added.
And other days will be stipulated?
Right.
Annually? Or some kind of language like that?
And additional days as?
Yeah.
Provided by the selectmen.
Okay, so you'll do a re-draft of?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that was easy. Okay, next steps for police station site. Bill, would you like to lead this discussion?
Sure. Sure, thank you. It seems to me that we've reached the point now where, where, as we discussed at the last meeting, that we're talking to Continuum about the three parcels on the corner of County Road and Newport Road. And Kim, I believe you've had some additional conversations, so would you enlighten us, please?
Sure. I spoke with Joe Hogan of Continuum and the owner of the three former Beulah properties. He is motivated to sell the property to the town for a sale price of $600,000. He would like the town to handle the purchase and sale agreement. So those conditions that you will want to add in the purchase and sale agreement should be decided as well as the price. If you want to negotiate a price other than $600,000, you'll have to come up with that. But I would recommend a surety amount of $10,000. You'll also have to decide what conditions you want with regard to that. Typically, the seller would be able to keep the money if the town doesn't go through it. Let's say the voters vote it down. You'd most likely, I think that Joe Hogan would like to get something out of it if he holds the property until March of 2023. I did mention to Joe that the town would likely do an appraisal. That's certainly your choice whether you want to do an appraisal or not, but I think he's very motivated. He does want to sell it to the town. I think he should, in the past, we have talked about, they have had some engineering work done. You might want to request those documents. I didn't discuss that in my most recent conversation, but I understand that they would be willing to include that work, which would be a benefit to the town, given that I'm sure they've spent a fair amount of money on them.
So could, could I make a, a motion, Nancy, to see if we can then discuss it that way?
Go ahead.
So I'd like to propose that the town enter into an option to purchase the 11-plus acres contained in the three parcels between County Road and on Long Newport Road, along with all the engineering and architectural documents that have been commissioned previously by the seller, for an amount to be determined by the Board of Selectmen, who will meet in non-public session to discuss the negotiation of the price. And that this price should be paid on or before March 31st, 2023, that, that date being chosen so that we have some time after the town meeting to arrange financing if it's, if it's approved, subject to the following conditions. First of all, obviously votes at the town meeting of March 15th, 2023, authorizing the purchase and issuance of bonds. Receipt by the town of an appraisal of the property by a certified MAI real estate appraiser valuing the property at either the purchase price or greater. Clear title and receipt of all the engineering and architectural reports commissioned by the seller within 30 days of the execution of the option agreement. And the option payment will, will be returned by the seller to us in the event that either the appraisal or the title or the failure to give us the engineering and architectural reports are not met. Otherwise, the option payment will be retained by the seller if the town meeting fails to approve the purchase or the financing. I do not think that, and that would be my motion, can I discuss it for a minute?
Yep, absolutely.
I don't think that other matters like site plans, further engineering work, other items enumerated attachment e to the Building Site Committee report of March should be part of the agreement because I think those will all be things that we'll consider here and with the help of the rest of the people in the town in preparation for the recommendation for the town meeting. So that, that will all be accomplished in whatever proposal we set forth to the town meeting. So I think we can keep this fairly simple by making sure that we agree on a number, have clear title, have a appraisal that we can use to support the amount of money that we're talking about, and that we do get all of the documentation that's, they've claimed to have done in the period of time since they, they had their original option with the Beulah people. I think that's, that's important consideration in the price that we agree on.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second your motion.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Moderator.
I would think that the determination of clear title would be an obligation of the buyer to do their own investigation and present any defects in title as a result of that investigation to the seller and afford the seller the opportunity to cure, as long as that's what, essentially what you're saying. That sounds good to me.
I just had the two words, clear title, written down here. You, you've done a much better job of explaining it, counselor.
So we're going to have to invest some money upfront for a title search and then present them with our.
And for some other things, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Joe?
A couple of things, and then a question about the timing, Bill. You talk about if it's approved, we can fund this March 31st.
I said May 31st.
May, even May 31st. My, my question down that, with regard to that, is really more about our fiscal year, what we vote on, maybe because it's a separate warrant article, we're allowed to expend it prior to, so as long as we're okay with that. It was, it was more along the fiscal year, so if we can expend it before that. With regard to an appraisal, you know, we're going to spend money, as Michael says, it's up, the burden is on us to do a title search, do all that stuff. I, I have some concerns about even the need to spend any money on an appraisal. It's, it's an interesting dynamic dealing in commercial real estate. After the financial crisis that we saw back in 2008 or whatever, you know, there were some new stipulations put on about arms-length appraisals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The curious thing to me is that the first thing the appraiser always asks for is the purchase and sales agreement. And interestingly enough, they always seem to find their way to that number. It happens time and time again. Now, are there times when it doesn't quite get there? Certainly, but then what leverage does that give us anyway? So I would maybe seek some other advice, not my advice, because I deal in commercial real estate every day, but I would, I would seek some other advice. An appraisal on that level might cost you $6,500, something like that, but if you don't need to spend it, is it, you know, and I'd like to hear other people's opinions. You know, Peter's been involved in, in commercial real estate, whether there's a need, you know, I mean, if it's $600,000 and the town feels that's, it's worth it for us to spend that money towards this end goal, I think that's the most important thing. You know, an appraisal can come in, I, I suggest the appraisal is going to come into whatever the agreed price is with always a little bit extra on it.
Joe, I couldn't agree with you more because as you know, I've also been involved with commercial real estate. I think there's two reasons why we have to do this, however. One, one is somebody is going to ask us, do we have an appraisal? And try to use the lack of one to say, well, we haven't done our homework. And number two, as you know, we did an appraisal five years ago, which was substantially below the type of numbers we're talking about now, and I think it behooves us on behalf of the town to be able to understand the difference between that appraisal and another one because, again, somebody who's seen those numbers, could be anyone, the public documents, is going to ask, how come if it was less than $100,000 five years ago, are you willing to pay $600,000 now? And then you're going to get into the, well, it wasn't exactly the same amount of land and da, 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 da. I just think it would be wrong for us to not be able to answer that question, just as when we were talking in our last meeting about the future use of the Bukeur Building. You could say, what's that got to do with buying some land in, on County Road and Newport Road? Well, it has to do with the fact that somebody is going to want that too. So I think it's beholds, who's the Board of Selectmen to try to do their homework on every conceivable issue here and so that the boat that takes place takes place with all the facts that are there. I'm with Mr. Beasley on the fact that, you know, we need our facts placed on everything.
I, I agree for that reason, to put it in front of the voters that an appraisal is probably prudent. With regards to the previous appraisal, that's going to be the challenge to defend on why it was under $100,000 at the time and now it's $600,000. What will be argued at that point is there was really no purchase and sales agreement at that time.
Well, also, Joe, that, that appraisal was only for a part of the land.
Exactly.
And there's been some evidence that the greater part of the value exists in the part that that appraisal didn't cover.
Likely is.
Because, you know that better than I do, probably. So I just, I just think it's prudent to spend the money to get the appraisal. It's going to be prudent to do some of the engineering work that's going to have to be done. It's going to be prudent to go to the town meeting with at least a conceptual plan of what, where on the site the building might be located and what it might look like, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we're talking about something where people are going to want information.
And by the way, if I need to go back up in the mic, it, you know, it feels like we're a couple of months away since the committee was disbanded, but it feels like we're at the same place we were two months ago. We knew it was about this price, we knew it was about $600,000. And the engineering studies that are available, you know, there are, there were some site, suggested site plans drawn up, so it's important, you know, that all those documents are identified, not just engineering studies, but there were some site plans by Jones, Jones and Beach, I believe it is.
Yes.
The seacoast.
Yeah, I mean, we're well aware of that, but also you and Pete and Colin know that at the time, the land that was being considered for $600,000 was only the seven acres. We're now talking about, and it's important for the record since this meeting's being recorded, we're now talking about two additional parcels for the same $600,000 that, that Mr. Hogan has suggested. So what, we have made some progress over the last couple of months in that we've reached some understanding, I think would be the right word with him, that we're talking about all three parcels, not just one of them.
Yes. Wait, Pete, you're next. Sorry.
Bob Lyon again, just a question. Police station on 11 acres of land or even seven acres of land, and I'm sure this question will come up when it gets to the town. Not a criticism, it's really a question. Why, I mean, I'm thinking a police station, an acre. I mean, seven, six, 11 acres? Can you help me understand why so much or is that what he's willing to sell us?
That's a good question, Bob. Matt, you want me going?
Sure.
So I think the Site Committee was talking about two acres for this and working with the, with the chief for, by the time you get to parking and, and so on. And the reason for 11 acres is that's what these three parcels are. The parcel that was discussed five years ago and was part of the recommendation of the Site Committee is seven acres, but most people would say only has two buildable acres on it. There's a considerable amount of wetlands and, and so on, so you have to, what we're talking about, how many we buy, then we have to say how many are usable. And then the other three and a half, close to four acres is a, a new horse in the race here, and I think probably what the selectmen will do is, once we have agreement that we're going to have this option, we'll then look at all 11 acres and say where with the chief and others, where's the best place on that 11 acres to put this station? But this is what the seller now has said. It's, it, you don't get to choose which parcel you want, you get them all, then we'll have to decide what to do with the rest of them. to decide what to do with the rest of them. For example, this was mentioned back several meetings ago, the cemetery commissioners have told us they're interested in having some more land. That's interesting. Don't know what to do with that right now, but I suspect that's not a frivolous request. So we'll see. Or we may end up doing something that Joe and I would not want to do, which is get in the real estate business and resell it. But that may be the, what has to happen. I mean, what, right now, what we want to do is capture this land so that we can then work with the chief and work with others to take this proposal forward. And hopefully, by the time we get to the end of the calendar year, we're able to talk to the community about what is proposed and then, you know, play around with it and so on. So we get to town meeting on March 15th, we'll have a solid proposal. Right now, what we're trying to do is get control of the land.
Peter?
What we're dealing with here is the uniqueness of real estate. A piece of property is where it is, and it's owned by an individual who can control exactly what happens with it within the regulations. Excuse me. The seller can ask whatever they want, and the buyer can decide whether they want to pay it or not. So I appreciate Joe's being frugal with appraisal fees. I think that makes a lot of sense, except for the fact that there was a story that's going to have to be told to sell this idea, as Mr. Helm just suggested. I would also suggest that bond buyers might be interested in knowing the real heart of what's in the property, the value of it too. Although I'm guessing the bond is not tied to the property as collateral, it's part of selling the bond as an idea. So I am in favor of an appraisal. I just want to understand a couple of things. One, the two conditions you've described, and I hear you loud and clear in the vernacular, clear title, with the clarification on who searches title and makes a complaint or not. So one condition is clear title, the other condition is ability to finance. Is that right? So it's a financing condition?
Financing condition is there because that's a town meeting decision.
Right, right.
And that is, we have to have that as an out. If we can't, we don't get the vote from town meeting, then obviously we can't proceed.
Of course. I just wanted to get clarification. So I would just add one other thing, and I've seen this happen. I think it would be a good idea, although it does incur additional expenses, to do a Phase One environmental review, to be sure that, I don't know the prior uses, but somebody needs to walk the property. I have seen in history farmland, for example, be contaminated with simple insecticides that were used through the years. And I'm not suggesting that's the case here, but it might be helpful. Phase One is a preliminary records review and a walk through the property. It's not too expensive, and it might be a good idea.
You're absolutely right, Peter, and that was in my sort of discussion afterwards when I said that the further town engineering work and other items enumerated in attachment E, that's all in attachment E. But absolutely, every one of those things has to be done, you know, water issues, driveway issues, power issues, da, 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 da.
Which we know there's a lot of ledge there.
Ledge. Yep.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Take a vote. Janet?
Aye, yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Nancy, aye? Okay, so the motion passes and we move forward with this. All right. Next, we have the letter from the Department of Transportation regarding West Side Drive discussion that we had on August 18th. Kim?
Right. Bill Lambert, who is the traffic engineer slash administrator for the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, reviewed the video of your meeting, and he just wanted to point out some clarifications in his position on the work that he's doing on the West Side Drive issue. And I noticed he, and I have given it to the West Side Drive folks, so they may have some comments on it as well. Mr. Lambert did send it to Chris Noon, who's the governor, along with Victoria Sheehan, who's the commissioner, Doug King, who's the District Two engineer, as well as the police chief, and yourselves. We also have the letter that you have already voted to send to the governor, so you'll have that to decide tonight, too. So I guess after hearing them, the issue would be, do you folks want to comment on it or just note receipt of it?
Is there a comment from?
Art Schutcher, West Side Drive, thank you for sending us the letter. It was helpful in that I was able to read it and provide comments on it to, my letter to the governor, the residents, all 15 of us sent a letter, signed letter, to the governor asking for his help, along with the other politicians. In commenting on the letter, I said, his letter underscores repeated lines on speed studies and setting speed limits, not mentioned other extenuating circumstances or skid mark evidence highlighted in the presentation. It does propose to eliminate the existing 30 mile an hour and 35 mile an hour zones for the stretch from George's Mill all the way up to, I believe, Hanaford's, it wasn't clear there, while reducing the 50 mile an hour zone to 45. We believe it's necessary to reduce the speed to 35 to provide safe and adequate reaction time. We don't believe that DOT is concerned about the health and safety of the people or taxpayers. No further comment.
So that was, you have sent that letter to the governor?
Received and sent. Senator, she's already written a letter to the board.
Great. All right, so how do we want to proceed? Bill or Janet?
You know, I think there isn't, there isn't a further action that we can take at this point. I think it would be advisable to hear from Senator Shaheen. If anyone could achieve movement on this issue, it would be her.
No, you mean Senator Ward?
I'm sorry, Senator Ward, but I thought you said that you didn't send it, a letter to the Senator Shaheen?
No, Victoria Sheehan is the Commissioner of DOT.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
Sheehan, yeah.
Okay. Well, perhaps Senator Ward can achieve some movement, but I'm not sure that the Board of Selectmen in New London can really get any further with this at this time.
But you will send that letter, though, to the-
Oh, yes, of course. Yeah, I think we should.
Send?
The Board is sending a letter to the governor in support of the investigation of the safe speed for that area.
And the reduction, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So let me just clarify one more time, because then maybe I misunderstood what you said. So you do still support us sending?
Oh, yes, absolutely. In fact, I thought we had already done that, so.
Oh, no. We didn't sign it.
Okay.
Yes.
The only comment I was going to make is that Bill Lambert sent the PowerPoint presentation he had given to the little son of a p, in there he cites RSA 265, and in it the last provision, in fact, provides under V A, B, and C provisions for the commissioner upon petition from the governing body of the municipality to determine if the speed limits should be changed. So you do have the ability to take some action according to what he sent us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Art, I think the only, I agree that we should sign the letter and get it all. The only other thing, Art, is, as you probably know, that as of November, our senator changes. And you might want to start to engage the other, the candidates, because Ruth Ward will no longer be in her district, and you may want to start to engage the candidates in, that are going to be our senator, and get them interested in the issue also.
I'd like to make a suggestion. We're waiting for the governor to go up next week before we make the next-
So it can nail down who the potentials might be?
There'll be two of them, for sure.
Yes, but I'd like to see what the governor says about it.
Okay. All right, so we'll proceed with the letter, then. Great, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, we'll hear soon. Okay, new business. Proclamation for Arbor Day in the town of New London?
Right, so I, I'm not sure how many years we have, the Board of Selectmen has proclaimed Arbor Day, but this year, we've been past-
At least nine.
At least nine. So what we need is a vote from the Selectmen to designate, what day is it? Hold on. One second, I'll get the date. Let's see, Arbor Day is Wednesday, October 19th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the town of New London.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we proclaim October 19th, 2022, as Arbor Day in New London. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have Arbor Day again. Primex cap program for property liability insurance?
Every three years, you have the opportunity to commit to Primex insurance for a three-year, three-year coverage. So I would recommend that you do that. That guarantees that our rates won't, they set an amount that it won't go above for towns that commit for three years. There's really no other, at this point, in New Hampshire, there's really no other pooled insurance that is as reliable as Primex. There used to be two companies in the state, now there's one, so I would recommend that we stay with Primex.
I would agree. I don't know that we take, do we need to take a vote on that?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the Primex cap program for property liability insurance for the next three-year period.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, town administrat-, was Michael?
Michael didn't want to speak during public comment, but maybe now's a good time to-
Yeah, Michael, would you like to speak about your reappointments? Okay. Why don't we do that? Everybody's leaving?
See you, guys. I'll send you-
Thank you for coming.
... when they sign.
Okay, before you, you have a list of four ballot, new appointments for ballot workers.
Three?
Curiously chased down by-
The individuals?
He's added one more, he'll tell you about that.
Pardon?
Oh, never mind, we have three on our list.
Oh, certainly, yeah. Got to see who that is. Oh, yeah, Tina Helm, who's done a phenomenal amount of fantastic work scheduling and recruiting people, and I'm internally grateful for that, came up with a list of two, to whom I added one. And then a third appeared, who happens to own the bakery, and because we weren't certain how to spell her last name, I could not locate her on the checklist, and therefore she was ineligible. But it took a little detective work. We figured it out that it's Lori Shive, and we, and she's a Democrat, and so I wrote her in on the list rather than having to recreate a new one and initial it. So those are the four people, Marie, Julianne, Achilles, and Lori. Achilles is my tenant, he was just naturalized as a United States citizen several months ago. He has a very great interest in the democratic process in the state, and he's consented to be a ballot worker. Let's see if we can, I think we're going to utilize him on the hand count teams. And as long as we're on that topic, permit me to say that the statutes have changed once again as a result of some of the fallout of the 2020 election, in that specifically the electronic cards of the AccuVote ballot counting device have been reprogrammed so that if a ballot is inserted into the machine in which a race is marked with more than the number of candidates, the ballot is rejected and must be counted by hand. So as a result, we've had to recruit some additional persons to hand count the entire ballots of all of these that are to be, that will be rejected, and they, that hand count must occur after the polls have closed. So we've recruited an additional, an additional six people to man two hand count teams and to make that happen. It's impossible to tell how many over-vote ballots will be kicked out, we just don't know. So it's, we could end up with needing more teams and have to recruit people on the fly to staff it, otherwise we'd be here all night, but-
So that delays the-
That delays the results, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, because the Secretary of State's office has also said to us, you do not want to release the taped result, because it's preliminary. So we've decided that we're not going to post anything until all the schedules that need to be into the Secretary of State's office by midnight that night are completed, and we'll post the results on the website.
By midnight, huh?
Can't stick a tape on the window anymore, that's misleading. Yes, we have our schedule in place, courtesy of Tina, she's done a great job assembling all these people. Of the 88 ballot workers that we have appointed at the present time, we were able to recruit about half of them to man this election, which is great. And the only other item, which I read with great distress in-
Michael, before you go on, can we just vote on those four?
Yes, you may, please.
Yes, I move that we appoint the four individuals in Moderator Todd's memorandum to be ballot clerks for the two years beginning November 1, 2020. Did you mean '21?
Yeah. Because they are appointed before the November of 2022, which hasn't occurred yet, we consider them to have been appointed in '21.
Two years from November 1, 2021, in accord with RSA 652, colon, two.
Bingo. So they will be reappointed in November of 2023, and then they'll be on the regular two-year cycle. That's kind of how we treated it.
All right, I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And permit me to say, I read with great distress in yesterday's Times, Around the U.S. Voting Offices Raise Security, front-page article, and they cite two specific states, Arizona and Colorado, in which perimeter fences have been erected around the ballot tallying locations, and threats of violence have kept against the persons responsible for the election results, have required them to seek security patrols around the clock for their personal safety. So I read this and I say to myself, boy, am I glad we don't live in a swing state. But by the same token, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least tell you or make a request that we have certain police coverage here from the 7:00 to 7:00 a.m. I need to be able to tell my ballot workers that we've made this environment as safe as possible for them to conduct their duties.
Right.
And I've had a conversation with the chief, and she has assured me that she will have all available personnel here. She can't have someone here straight 7:00 to 7:00, but she'll do the best she can, unless I misunderstood what you said.
I would like us to cover the 7:00 to 7:00 p.m.?
Right.
They're not available. They should be able to-
Understood.
Especially during busy times.
Understood. But I just wanted to make that note.
Agreed. Thank you.
Michael, while you're here, might you make that request to the chief now for November, because that's when we really should be concerned about the types of things that article covers?
I did. I gave her the date of the election, and we mentioned it, we talked about it briefly, and I also mentioned it to our road agent. After eight or nine years of this, I'm finally beginning to learn who you have to notify to get things done and give them plenty of time.
The election next week doesn't have a lot of give and take on the partisan side that the one in November will have.
It could, it could, but that's good. I need to reassure my workers they'll be safe. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, town administrators' report?
Yep. After the busy Labor Day weekend, everybody's back to our regular schedule of work, so everyone's busy on their budgets. They're due tomorrow, and I expect that I will have most of them. Some departments need to do some additional discussions, like the fire chief wants to run it by the fire wards and the library trustees, the same, but we'll have it all, I'm hoping, by the 16th, so that you folks have it before, for the weekend before we start our schedule on the 22nd. And speaking about the schedule, I did give you a draft schedule, so if we can kind of look at it and have you decide whether the groupings are what you want to have, and also the dates. I put in some dates, but we can certainly change them around as you decide or as you see fit. The CIP won't be to public hearing until, I believe it's the 11th, so sometime after that is when you'll get the official one. I talked to Adam about it, they will have, the planning board will have it finalized prior to the public hearing, so I suppose you could start earlier than October 20th, looking at capital reserves and the bonded debt, if you want to just look at the draft that goes to the public hearing. So it really just depends on whether you want the final approved one or the one that goes to public hearing.
So Nancy and Jen, I sent you all a message when we saw this earlier today. I would like us to put October 13th back in. I cannot do October 20th. I've had, thinking that we were on different- Thinking that we were on a different schedule, had already made other plans for that day. And the other, so, but I have, did have October 13th, the second Thursday of the month, on my calendar, so that might just replace what Kim has here for the 20th, as with October 13th. And then the other thing I might suggest is that I think the public safety discussions are probably going to be the longest, and putting all of those together in one night might be a lot, or do you, if we do the 13th also, might they just run over to the next meeting?
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, if I look at the schedule, I think the groupings are right, but that, I don't think we'll get all that one done on that one night.
We used to think that, like, highway and public safety would run over, and the last couple of years, they haven't, but any one of these groupings could run over to the next meeting, and what we do is start the next meeting with that.
Right.
Particular thing.
So the only change, then, is that October 13th from October 20th?
That would take care of the concern I had earlier today when I saw the calendar, yeah?
So we're talking September 22nd, 29th, October 6th, October 13th, October 27th, November 3rd, November 10th, and November 16th. Is that okay with you, Janet?
So the 10th is an extra, so if we do start running over.
Right, understood.
So if these groupings are okay, we'll send them to department heads, there may be some, but I've tried to keep away from dates that don't work for departments, but.
And November 16th is actually the Wednesday, I believe, when the budget committee would be.
Yeah, that's why I put November 16th, so then they would have it.
It's not one of our meetings.
No, it's a turnover.
That's when they get it.
Yep. So I think your goal was to do it a little sooner, so the budget committee had more time.
Perfect, yeah. I just think that one, after looking at it, crazy calendar day.
Okay.
That's all I have?
Thank you.
That's all you have? Okay, committee meetings and reports. Janet?
Okay, the waste committee has met again and made some progress, as agreed to, met with Bob Harrington and agreed to try a three-month, 15-family trial of, of, of collection of.
Compost?
Compostable debris at the transfer station. Bob has agreed with that, with two so-called totes, 48-gallon totes. Member of the committee is determining which of two suppliers will pick them up. The state law requires them to be retrieved and emptied every week, and Bob has told us that the highway department, the Public Works revolving fund that they use for, you know, when they get money for people leaving electronics and so on, will be sufficient to cover that three-month trial. So I think we're, this group is off and running with a 15-family trial. They understand that future legal issues around liability and so on still have to be covered.
Have the 15 families come forward, or are we soliciting them?
I think they asked him to do something municipal matters to solicit them, so that we get a cross-section of people, it's not just the members of the committee.
Yeah, in fact, the members of the committee probably won't do it, because they do composting at home, and they use the materials, so they probably won't be bringing it to the transfer station. But I think they feel like there's enough interest with the other citizens that they will do it, sign up.
Great. Okay. Housing Commission met and focused on the upcoming development, yeah, upcoming presentation around what workforce housing looks like and what needs to change. This is going to focus on local and regional professional developers and architects. It is next Wednesday at 6 o'clock, and it is at the Kearsage Regional Professional Development Center. Peter's here, I don't know if you want to add anything, or relative to that? Okay. So that's that?
Minutes of July 28th is, I didn't realize that we hadn't approved those at the last meeting, so you might want to take those up. And I think you only got the other ones today, so perhaps we can put those off and let you have had a chance to read them.
I move we accept the minutes of July 28th.
Yeah, I'll second that. Any discussion, changes? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Janet, aye?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. All right, we have the upcoming meetings. By the way, all meetings here will be at Whipple Hall from now on, so people can redirect their vehicles in a different direction.
Yeah, and if I should add, after I sent this out, we did set the future use of Buicker meeting, that'll be tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. here.
And the police department's subcommittee meeting got rescheduled?
I didn't hear about that one.
Was it yesterday? That happened?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I was there, it went very well, I thought. I could report on a committee meeting, I was there. Or the chief could say, I skipped the tour, because I have seen it several times, but I thought it went well, I think. Oh, both Joe and Colin were there, so.
Okay, great. Yes, because I knew that that had to be rescheduled. All right, any other business coming for the board?
Yes, I move that we recess to non-public session under Chapter 91-A:3, Roman numeral 2, Subparagraph D, to discuss the purchase, sale, and leasing of property.
Oh, yes. Well, no, there wasn't really a meeting.
Yeah, there was a meeting to, for the only purpose of.
Approving the.
Yeah, hiring, the Triton is going to hire a new full-time person, so we will be back up to speed. We have not, we don't have a signed offer yet, but we are going to put an offer out to somebody who's very experienced, and this could be a really, I think it would be really good for our assessing, because Chris has been.
Chirring her hair out.
At least for a year, yeah. And it's a lot, I mean, it's, so we're hopeful. So I'll report back if the person signs off on the offer, we think he will, so that's a good thing.
Great, yeah. So the meeting's actually going to be September 27th?
Yeah, so we'll have a full meeting, yeah.
A full meeting. Okay, so you second Bill's motion for non-public? Okay, take a roll call, Bill?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Nancy, yes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thanks, chief.